Welcome everybody to the second special call meetings to discuss the millage and the proposed budget. These are public hearings on that. So let me just, what we're going to do here is we're going to have Bill Volkman of Director Finance do a very short presentation. We heard some concerns last, the last hearing that the budget was a little complicated. Can't imagine why people would think that. It's only about, what, 250 pages?
Yeah.
So we've taken it, taken that presentation and summarized it, that breaks down into more broad categories. But the bottom line here is that we're here, all of us, including the staff, to answer your specific questions. I just tell everybody, we work for you. So there's nothing in this budget that we can't tell you about. So if there's something that on the screen that, that you don't understand, and I realize a lot of times people don't like to stand up because they think that they seem foolish. They ask a question, trust me, the only famous line, there's no, there's no such thing as a bad question. But let us know and we'll direct you. We'll sit down, we'll point out, we'll email you, we'll send you the charts as to break down exactly what it is that will respond to your question. So that, Bill, if you just go into that
Yes, sir.
Brief summary again.
Well, we're going to have the millage first.
Okay.
So we're going to do that one first. We'll open that public hearing and then we'll briefly have a budget. But, well, I'm just going to leave up here, for example, I just want to have the dates, first of all. So we had our first public meeting on July 9th. This is our second public hearing on July 16th. And our third and final public hearing will be on July 23rd, and that's our regularly scheduled BOC meeting at 7:00 PM. And that will also be the night of millage adoption. So with that, I have a slide here showing last year's FY18's adopted millage rates broken down by fund, as well as the 19 proposed, which is the basis for the FY20 budget. You can see going down from 18 to 19 that they're identical, that we're not proposing any millage adjustments or increases to any of the, any of the funds that you see listed. And with that, sir, I just ask that you open the public hearing.
All right. So just to give everybody the ground rules, an unlimited number of speakers. You, we're asking you to speak for three minutes and that you identify yourself and generally where you live so we can, we can want to get back to you. And then with that, I now declare this second public hearing open on proposed millage rate, proposed property tax increase as defined by Georgia law. I've now declared, formally declared the second public hearing open on this issue. So anyone that'd like to come up and talk about the proposed millage rate, remember that just millage or budget. So if you're talking about the budget, that'll come here in a few, in a few minutes. So I think your letter was about the budget. All right? So if you just...
What? About both?
It's about both. Okay. So let's know who you are and where you live and you have the reporting for three minutes, sir.
My name is Avery Moss. I live in Ostel. The biggest cop, the biggest problem Cobb County faces right now is overpopulation. We need to eliminate, well, there's, the budget has a significant impact on that overpopulation, and we need to eliminate the property tax on all land, less than or equal to that. People would need to provide food, clothing, shelter, and instruments and all equipment that would be necessary to provide such goods for every member of the family or relative living on the land, not including land occupied by buildings. We need to eliminate cell tax on all equipment or animals that a farm family would need to provide for itself in colonial times, provide food, clothing, shelter, and enough instruments for the whole family and any language books. We needed, to assist that, we would also need an educational program that teaches students K through 12, the skills that they or colonial farm family would be fundamentally depending on, and a parks program that does the same for adults on weekends, skills such as plowing with an ox. Eliminate apartments, trailer homes, and townhomes, first by making any vacancies permanent, and then forbidding procreation, and then afterwards moving to houses by restricting procreation to one house for every 132 feet in every direction from the building line, starting with the oldest or longest remaining resident, and then increasing that setback by the same amount every time an owner passes, with ownership not being able to be sold away until they exist on all property, meaning around every dwelling, land, and trees, for a family to provide every member of the family with food, clothing, and shelter. If the county can, it should execute violators, and whether, and whether it can or cannot, it should work with other local and county governments to establish the land-based restriction on procreation is at least as strong as the one I am suggesting for Cobb County. And along with this, we should censor the entertainment industry with the help of other state and local governments.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else like to comment, have a comment about the proposed millage rate? Okay. Seeing none, I now declare the second public hearing closed. Then before we open the second public hearing, the budget, I'm going to have Bill, did you have a short presentation? Are we good on that?
We were good on that. I was just going to queue up the one slide showing all the funds, so it's available to the public as we before.
That's great. Okay.
So if you can go to the next one. So as we get this queued up here real quick, I just kind of want to hit the dates. They're exactly the same for the budget as they are for the millage. We paired these together because they are linked. And again, the millage that we're adopting at the end of July on the 23rd is for the 19 fiscal year, but the basis for the FY20 budget. And what I would like to do is just skip ahead here to, Chairman, do you want me to touch on this at all?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So if you, if you remember, one of the things that we focused in on last year was breaking our general fund down into mandated and essential desired. So what we've done here is to give you an idea of the breakout. And this chart here is exactly the same as it was when we adopted FY19. So as we had increases, they affected the mandated and central desired categories equally. So at FY19 adoption, mandated was 40%, essential was 40%, and desired was 20%. And the same applies to FY20 proposed budget. So with that, I want to go ahead and queue this up. And this is going to be a breakdown of the funds, the projected increases year over year. We can, we won't walk through those, but I wanted to have that up there for, in case there was any comments or questions during the public hearing.
Okay.
So with that, I'd ask that the board open the public hearing.
Okay. So again, an unlimited number of speakers. I ask you to speak for three minutes and let us know who you are and roughly where you live. And with that, I now declare the second public hearing on the proposed 2020 budget open for, for public comment. So...
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager, my name's Steve Gaynor. I represent the Fraternal Order of Police, whose location is at 2350 Ostel Road in Marietta. And I want to thank you for listening to our concerns and the concerns of the citizens over all these months and a couple of years. The present situation within Cobb County public safety is extremely critical, especially in the Police Department and Sheriff's Office. Many of the five police precincts are running with one-third less patrol officers than they had at this time last year. Many of the investigative units are also shorthanded, and they cannot give the proper attention that investigations require and the citizens deserve. The present proposal of the 7% raise to all sworn and certified public safety staff is a step in the right direction. I thank you for that. It will help with recruitment and retention, but your promise to implement a step and grade pay system with the 2021 budget will make a much, make us much more competitive with the metro Atlanta agencies. I believe that holding the step and grade plan until you address the 2021 budget will give us time to properly study and financially address the plan instead of rushing it through at this time, without future funding and properly identifying where the future funding is going to come from if we move towards that step and grade now. I would like to urge all of you to vote to approve the present plan, pledge to work towards the step and grade plan in 2021. We look forward to continuing to work with you on this matter and address the, and I thank you for addressing the hybrid pension plan that we had issues with, the POAB or the state retirement plan for both police and fire, and the one-time bonus, which tells employees that you do care, or public safety employees that you do care and you were listening, and please hang in there, we're working on it. So thanks again for listening and thanks for all you're doing.
Thank you, Steve.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Samantha Glass from Ableton, Georgia. I want to thank you for hearing us and moving in a positive direction to address improvements that must be made to compensation in our public safety. For me and many others, taking care of the people who put their lives on the line for ours is the utmost priority. I'm not able to make every BOC meeting, but I do watch them remotely, and I study the information provided. Thank you for the steps that you have proposed to move the needle towards adequate compensation for our public safety. While I agree that it has been, with all that has been proposed for this budget, I believe we still have a ways to go. We still have too many sworn positions open in public safety. We have higher standards in Cobb County, which I agree with. Cobb should lead the way, and we should be the elite standard, which is why we have to offer an attractive and competitive compensation and benefits package in a highly competitive market. We currently have pay and benefits that are well below many competitors. Our police officers have only had an increase in pay in the last, in three of the last 11 years, yet their insurance costs have continued to rise. Due to the lapse in pay increases for so many years, the 7% increase at this time is well overdue. The proposed incentives and perks for public safety are fair and reasonable as well. Most employees don't run towards bullets, excuse me, the, most employees don't run towards bullets or flames on a regular basis, so comparing all county employees to public safety is not a true or fair comparison. These heroes have to have decent pay and pension, simply due to the plethora of health complications that they face from a career of consistently putting their bodies in harm's way for the rest of us. Again, thank you for considering these steps. I look forward to being in attendance next week as you vote yes to passing all the proposed. However, I implore you not to rest on these laurels. This issue must continue to be addressed long-term. Ask that you please work with Director Register and leadership to continue the study of a step and grade plan so that it can be presented as early as possible and approved to go into place immediately in the 2021 budget, if not sooner. Also ask that you revisit the pension plan. And also, lastly, please review the budget further to find any additional retention bonuses possible for our current officers who have stuck with us during this time of crisis. These heroes have worked tirelessly while underpaid, understaffed, and overworked, while still staying loyal to Cobb. They have done more with less, keeping our crime rates low, taking care of business, ensuring, ensuring that Cobb is still the best place to live, work, and play. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Glass. Any other comments? Seeing none, I now declare this, come on up.
Good afternoon. My name is Randall Bedgiden. I live in West Cobb. I would like to encourage you to go through the, I think that's called the step and grade that Commissioner Ott had suggested. I think that's the best system that you could come up with for all county employees. I'd like to see all county employees go to that. That's the way private industry is run. You know how much service you got, how much money you're going to make, and then you get a raise once a year, whether it be a cost of living raise, a cost of living raise in addition to another raise. I'd like to see you go away from the merit raise. I think if you go strictly to the step and grade and do a cost of living raise and then do whatever other raise you want to do, that takes the politics out of it, both internally and external politics. And on the pension plans, you've got two pension plans now, you're fixing to create three pension plans. The, the state pension plan, which they want you to start paying the premium on that annuity for them, the other employees don't get that option. There's not another pension plan that you can pay into for them, and you're not going to give them another match on their hybrid plan. The cost of that fund, the cost of that premium will go up in years to come. And unless you got a provision, if you pass it, you need to have a provision in there that caps it at some point, or you're going to get into a situation where you're paying more and more. A lot of these small police departments throughout the state, the county pays that for those employees because that's the only retirement plan they have. The county's done, done furnish a retirement plan, so that's, that's the way they make up for it. Now, like I said, if you, if you continue that, because once this starts, once bigger counties get involved in this, paying this, these officers are going to demand more and more retirement from that fund. And that fund, the premiums are going, have to go up to support it. And that's just a fact. And if you think about it, you know I'm correct. If an officer, you know, if I, if I was on a job and I could get into another pension plan for $25 a month, they would pay me, and I may be wrong on this, but the last time I heard, I think it's about $760 a month, I'd make arrangements to get that money to pay into that fund. So that's just something you should think about because it's going to be a reoccurring expense. It's going to go up as time goes on. And like I said, if you'll, if you'll, I think you should stop right now.
Sir, sir, I'm sorry, your time's up.
Thank you.
And just for those, Chair, for me, just for those speakers that speak, there is a timer that's on the podium when you're speaking, and you'll be able to see your time as it marks down. Okay.
Good, good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, County Staff. My name is Irene Barton with the Cobb Collaborative. I reside in the East Cobb area. I want to thank you for the opportunity tonight to address you, you all. I appreciate the fact that you are elected to do what's best for the more than 750,000 citizens of Cobb County, and you must juggle competing interests to accomplish that. Whatever your decision is regarding the contracts that, with the organizations who are performing vital health and human services in this community, I want to make sure it is a fully informed decision. The organizations receiving contracts deliver programs and services in the four priority areas approved by this board. The organizations and the contract amounts are recommendations, but the final decision is the, this board's decision. Organizations do not and never have been required to be members of the Cobb Collaborative. Clients are served across Cobb County, no matter where the agency is located. Nonprofits are working together to address critical issues like homelessness and generational poverty. It may appear that the homelessness situation is not improving. We will hear results from our point in time count tomorrow. But consider the hundreds of people who have been housed through the coordinated entry system, which was implemented in January of last year. In fiscal year 18, the agencies receiving the contracts leveraged $850,000 into more than $2.6 million. Many HUD and other federal funding programs require matching funds, so loss of funding on the contracts jeopardizes an entire funding stream and investment in our community. Addressing community-wide issues requires a three-legged approach, government, nonprofit, and the faith community, who then engage their stakeholders. No one group can fund this alone. Our population and the issues that our population face are beyond the scope of one segment. Some may feel that taxpayer dollars should not fund nonprofits, but as we recall, and it was shown on the slide, there are three mandated areas, and there are many parts of our budget that go to programs that contribute to the quality of life, just like the contracts and programs that these organizations that our recipients are providing. Programs offer directly impact priority areas like public safety and health outcomes. I leave you with this. The funding pays for these organizations, pays for services rendered. If these services are not provided, who will provide them? Who will answer the phone? Who will appear with clients in eviction court? Who will support workforce training for the disabled persons? Who will help a student stay on track to graduate? Who?
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. I'm Jerry Barr, and I live in Smyrna, and I work in Marietta for the Center for Family Resources. I'd like to speak tonight to request that you reconsider funding to contract with a nonprofit community to provide the critical human services to improve our community. I have been working in the nonprofit field here in Cobb County since 1978, and we are so fortunate to have some of the best organizations who work so well with our local governments, businesses, churches, and schools to provide these critical human services. We are blessed that our nonprofit community collaborates and coordinates with one another, but we cannot do it alone. We need your financial support and engagement. For more than 35 years, as long as I've been the CEO for the Center for Family Resources, you have generously and graciously supported the work of the nonprofit community. Your support is critical to each of our organizations to be able to leverage funding from the community at large and to match federal dollars four to one. The loss of this funding, starting October 1, is devastating. I urge you to consider including contracting with us. I'd like to address the thoughtful and deliberative work of the Cobb Collaborative in helping you to make these funding decisions. For more than 20 years, Chairman, more than 20 years, 20 years ago, Chairman Byrne came to the Collaborative and asked us to design a funding process that was fair and equitable because, as professionals, we know the nonprofit world and could help identify best practices for funding. The previous system was the good old boy system. It was who you knew who determined who was funded. So the, now the Collaborative, using that deliberative system, makes recommendations to you, which you can modify as you need to do to address your constituents. You can take their recommendations in total, or you can add, or you can subtract as you deem appropriate. I urge you to reconsider their recommendations and consider including contracting with us during this budget cycle. One last thought I have is to share the concept of giving a little to many versus a lot to a few. At CFR, we have changed our methodology to help fewer families with more rather than many families with a little. We used to give 1,000 families $100. Now we give 100 families $1,000 for rent. In the old scenario, families need to spend their time then looking for the rest of the money for their rent. Now they can spend their time on more critical needs to really help their families to stabilize, like finding a job. Nonprofits are the same. Giving small amounts to many is not as effective as giving more to a few. Getting a small amount means they still have to spend valuable time fundraising to meet their budget needs. Getting a significant gift means they can concentrate on providing their critical service. I urge you to consider including contracting with us.
Thank you, Mrs. Barr.
Well, good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Sharon Mason, I'm honored to serve as the Cobb Chamber President and CEO, also a resident of Cobb County the last 14 years. And I am here to speak about public safety on behalf of our Cobb Chamber Board of Directors and our 2,500 business members. And I first want to thank this Board of Commissioners for your multi-phase approach in addressing the compensation and retention issue for public safety. And sincerely appreciate the merit-based increase that you passed back in May, and that you're also considering with this budget, an additional compensation increase. It's above and beyond a normal increase overall for public safety. We believe this will greatly help with ensuring that we retain and attract the best officers here in Cobb County. We are truly blessed, as we know, to have the best public safety officers, and want to make sure we continue staying that way, continuing to be the best place to live, work, and play. And we know that public safety plays a very critical role in that each and every day. So thank you for considering this with this year's budget.
Thank you, Mrs. Mason.
Hello. My name is Susan Hampton. I reside in East Cobb. First of all, I would like to thank you for the $14.75 bonus that was done for the, out of the fiscal year of 2019. Second, I would like to say that I am in strong support of the 7% increase for public safety in the 2020 budget that you're currently considering. However, there's another piece that I would like to bring to your attention that is very important, which is the step and grade. Of course, I am in support that this should be included in the 2021 budget because there are so many components to that, and we want to make sure that that is done right, and it is reviewed by the people that will really, it will really impact. Obviously, as you're aware, that the step and grade is a very important component to retain and recruit public safety officers for our police, fire, and sheriff's office. It has been brought to my attention that there are some concerns by some public safety officers that if the step and grade is not included in the 2020 budget, it will not be reviewed and approved in the 2021 budget. Obviously, this meeting is not about the 2021 budget, but I would like to request a commitment from each one of our Commissioners to addressing the step and grade in the 2021 budget, and agree to include the Public Safety Director, Chief of Police, Fire Chief, and the Sheriff's Department. and the Sheriff's Department. Regardless of the election outcome results, each of you will be here to prepare and pass the 2021 budget. Your public support to the stepping grade and the 2021 budget will show a strong, good-faith commitment to our public safety officers, and I hope that each one will consider doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hampton.
Hello, my name is Mary Frances Williams. I live in Marietta. I'm the State Representative for House District 37, and thank you for letting me have another bite at the apple. I spoke last time, and three minutes is not a lot of time. So, in thinking, I'm speaking about the proposed cut to the funding for nonprofits. And I've spoken to most of you personally, except I have not reached out to Commissioner Ott like I should have, and I want to acknowledge that. So, I haven't chewed on him yet, but, but I really worry that your minds are made up, based on the conversations I've had with most of you. I want to know, though, do we know how many people, how many jobs will be lost as a result of these cuts to these nonprofits? How many problems will go unsolved? Do you really think homelessness and child abuse will lessen or go away, or even stay at the same level if these cuts are made? Once this money is gone, I've done a lot of budget advocacy, and once this money is gone, it's gone. It's really, really hard to get a chunk of money like this back in the budget. So, if, I have heard concerns from some of you about the process. So, my ask would be, if you don't like the current method of grant selection, which in truth just presents recommendations to you, as Ms. Barr said, to, you know, throw out, take apart, whatever, or not, then you can, you can go ahead, you can reject that plan, and you can go back to the, to the planning board. The faith community cannot fill the gaps. Even big churches like my own are tightening belts and struggling to meet budgets. So I ask you, please, to reconsider this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Williams.
My name is Patricia Hay, and I'd like to thank you for this opportunity, and I hate public speaking, as you well know, so I won't take up three minutes. One thing brought to my attention, government's job is not to fund, to have, to supply money to nonprofits. That's not government's job. I'm a taxpayer. I'm going to be retired soon, and I don't know how much I'm going to be able to report, afford. And what I'd like to say is, when is enough enough? Are you really being good stewards of our money? That's what I'd like to ask you. Are you really being good stewards? And it's not government's job to take care of people. It really isn't. That's not your job. And that's really all I've got to say. I don't have anything prepared. I'm not a good public speaker.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Most of you know me. I think I know all of you. My name is Lori Dyke. I'm a certified public accountant and a certified fraud examiner. I have lived in East Cobb for over 30 years, very proud to be a part of Cobb County. I served on the Citizens Oversight Committee in 2010, I believe, and I've served on the Audit Committee since 2012, when it was formed. I know you all have a tough job. I've listened to these competing interests, and I don't envy the decisions you have to make. My goal today is to remind you that although the Internal Audit Department is not high-profile or sexy, it's really important to the life of this community. The Internal Audit Department is your last line of defense against errors, fraud, and abuse. Part of my professional job is to fight fraud and to investigate fraud. When I started in this business, I thought I would be preventing fraud. But what I found is that no one ever believes it's going to happen to them. So now, I don't work to prevent it, I just wait until it happens to these companies, and they hire me. And instead of paying $5,000 for a fraud checkup, they pay me $100,000 to investigate. And sometimes they go out of business. Latona Thomas is probably the most qualified internal audit manager or director I've ever worked with. She's capable, she's a good communicator, she allocates resources well, she focuses on priorities, she is doing the best job she can with her staff. But the longest tenure staff she has has been with her, I think, two years. They are inexperienced in Cobb County. And I promise you, there are, there is opportunity for fraud in our county. Whether it's happening or not, I don't know. I would venture to guess it is, and it will be detected at some point down the road. For, again, I think the seventh year, no additional resources have been allocated to this department in terms of staffing. And again, I understand your competing interests, but if you can't allocate positions, then I would encourage, implore you to please find some resources to let that department conduct IT audits, prevent cybersecurity, look for fraud and abuse in the areas where we think it probably exists. At the moment, 25% of our audit hours for this coming budget year are held over for them, from the 2017 and 2018 year. So thank you for your time. I think I'm out of time.
Okay, thank you. All right, last call. Come on up, come on up.
I just have a question.
That's the second time I've seen your hand. I'm not going to ask the third time, all right?
Well, I just have a question.
Uh, well, you got to come up to the podium, like, because people want to see who you are. All right.
Chairman and Commissioners, I'm Norm Fag. I live in Northeast Cobb, and I came out to this budget hearing just to see kind of what was going on. And I went to the Cobb County website, and I tried to find the budget, and I could not. I could find the one for 2018, but I couldn't find the proposed 2020 budget. So, that's my question, where is it?
Where's, where's Ross? I, I know it's on the website. We have the presentation.
So I just, it was, if it's, I don't doubt that it's on the website, but it was not easy to find.
See the guy behind you?
Yeah.
He'll point you in the right direction, okay?
I can always email it to you directly, but the link is out there under the budget tab, so make sure that...
Just, just make sure you take care of Norm here.
Get you a copy. Okay. Happy to.
Okay. It's, it's out there. It's out there.
Can you link it on the front page?
Under the, I'm sorry. Ross, you want to, you said the front page?
Just temporarily.
Yeah, because you're right, you have to go down to Finance, Budget, and accordingly to find it.
We do have some links on the, on some of the stories on the front page.
On the front page?
The problem is, the search, when people search for it in there, that's not pulling it up, but if they do read those budget stories, it's in there.
All right, well, for the next week, we'll put it on the front, we'll put it on the, on the homepage. It's, it's, it's there. Pam just said it's there.
I forwarded it to people, but I, I don't know how, how did I get to it, if it's not that simple?
It's there. Okay. Any other, any other comments tonight? One last call, I'll be patient here. Okay.
Sure, thank you for your time. My name is Donald Icobalseto Roberts. I live in East Cobb. I've lived in Cobb for approximately 10, 12 years. I'm just very concerned about the property taxes, and we're seeing residents who are getting priced out of their homes in a very, very short amount of time. So I'm just very concerned here that this budget is just looking at one year at a time, and we're not really trying to address any systemic or widespread issues with the county. So I, I just don't know what you're doing to, to do this. We all know what's happened with the baseball stadium, it's a wreck. So, you know, I, I just don't know what, what you're doing about it. I'm lucky enough that I can afford these increases, but I'm more worried about the residents who aren't as well off as, as probably most of us in this room.
Okay. If you would, if you would hang around after the hearing, I'll, I'd be glad to talk to you, okay? Any other comments? Okay, scene done. I now declare this second public hearing closed on proposed budget for 2020. Oh, okay. Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Bill, I have some questions.
Yes, sir.
On the special service districts, okay, I'm looking at the slide that you have right now.
Yes, sir.
And you're showing all of it going, both one and two, all going to stadium debt?
That...
But then on the page here, then our books, it says 2020 Proposed Operating Budget? It's a different number. I think that's confusing, because I know it's not all going to stadium debt.
Yes, and we, we kind of walked through that in the more detailed version of the presentation. So you're exactly correct. In the CSSD1 tab, a portion of that is going to fund stadium debt. There are other portions of that that are going to fund Cobb Travel and Tourism.
And, and I know, I know where they're going.
But we can...
Okay, my, my comment is that that slide...
Yes.
Is confusing, because it makes you think that it's all going to stadium debt, and it's not.
Understood. We could, we could add a separate slide or something for that to break that up.
Right, because, because you have a slide here also that, the stadium bond debt?
Yep.
Service, yeah, that one right there.
Yes, sir.
I, I just think that they need to match.
Understood.
Because somebody, I mean, when somebody finally finds the budget on the webpage...
Yes, and...
Um, they're not going to understand what it says if looking at these slides.
Understood. And we, we will have to do some, I guess, explanation on that, because with CSSD1, you have basically two lines out. You have contributions which are going to Cobb Travel and Tourism, and then you have transfers. The transfers, some of that's going to fund stadium debt, some of that's going to fund police coverage in the area, and some of that's going to fund circulator. So we will detail that out for you, sir.
Right, because I, I mean, you know, someone coming to look at this, they need to know that...
Yes.
Where the money's going.
You're exactly right. So we, we will explain that out for you, sir.
So wait.
That's, that was the main thing I wanted to bring up.
Okay, all right. Other Commissioners?
Yes, I will, I will make sure on our final presentation slide, I will give you some subcategories to detail that one out, because the other ones that say stadium debt do go 100% to fund stadium debt, but that one, as Commissioner Ott stated, only a portion goes to fund stadium debt. So, sure, happy to do that.
Sure, go ahead.
This is actually directed to Ms. Dyke. Thank you for your service on the Oversight Committee and the Audit Committee. I've worked with you for a long time, and we appreciate you voluntarily giving your expertise and service. And I agree with you totally about Latona, she's the best. And I would ask that she give us a proposal of the two positions that she needs, desperately needs, to see if there's any way we can incorporate it into this budget, and look at that. Latona's here, right? Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Gabriel?
Bill, I know you said the additional breakdown you would have ready for the presentation next Tuesday. Are we going to be able to see that before next Tuesday?
Absolutely. I'll be happy to send it to you prior to, without a doubt.
Do you know in what, when?
I can get it to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yes, I concur with Commissioner Burl with the support for the two additional audit positions. I'm in my second term of serving on the Audit Committee, and as Ms. Dyke shared, support of that role allows us to be preventive in what could end up being exorbitant costs to the county if we were not, if we were not prioritized, how we're being preventive with how we move funds throughout our agencies. So, I was, I was not aware of the two positions being proposed, but now that I am, I'm in support of them being added to the budget as well.
Well, they weren't, they weren't proposed.
No.
We're going to, if we're going to add them, the board's going to have to add them at the, at the, before we adopt the final budget. But they were never part of any proposal.
Sorry, proposed, I'm, suggest, they were suggested by the department.
There's also the, there's also an alternative where you could contract some of this work out, so, rather than, because once you, once you propose addition positions, then that opens the door for every Commissioner in here to say, well, my department has requirements too that we, that we're unfunded. So we got to, just want you to throw that out there, to be aware of that, so. If we're going to be fair about this, you know, the other Commissioners might also have similar needs, and then once you start doing that, you know, it's just, you start unwinding the budget.
Well, I guess, Bill, if you could clarify for myself and also our audience, how did we come up with the 2020 personnel recommendations that we have here?
Okay, so, going back to the slide here, we have all positions listed on the slide that we're currently proposing. So the way that this process worked is, and early in the process, we met with the Chairman and the Vice Chair and the County Manager, and we talked about the priorities of the budget being additional compensation. So with that, when the budgetary requests went out to the departments, we were asked to hold personnel unless it was mandated or required. So with that being said, a lot of the five-year budget plans that were submitted in part of FY19, which contained a lot of personnel, most departments did not even submit those because of those restrictions. So when we specifically talk about, you know, internal audit, they adhere to that instruction, because we were looking at that to be mandated and essential, or mandated and required only, and we were look, not looking for program expansion at that time. So, that's why most of these are very limited, and some of these did come from internal audit investigations. For example, magistrate court, we had an internal audit. Additional positions were requested to address that concern or need, and, but if you go through this list, most of these are elected officials, with the exception of, you have a building maintenance tech for PD for a new facility that's going to be coming online, actually two new facilities that'll be coming online. But if you go down the list, District Attorney, elected official, magistrate, elected official, PD we just addressed, probate elected official, and then Information Services, they are deleting a position and creating a full-time one, which is the reason that made the list. And then on page, the second page, these are water, which are self-funded by fees, so that's why these are included. These are not general fund driven. Okay? And, sorry, go ahead. Commissioner, you have a question? Okay.
So, I'm just looking at the stuff I have in here. So the emergency 911 fund position went away?
Yes, oh, it's actually, it's going to stay within the budget, but we did a, working with Destiny and HR, we added it as a new position. It was created through holding some vacancies flat in 19. So they actually created it early, based on vacancies that they've had, so we didn't need to add it here. It is part of the 20 budget, but it's not a newly created one, because it was already done in 19. We viewed it initially as a newly created position, but due to vacancies and some, basically reorg within 911, they were able to create that early in FY19. So, although it's a continuation in 20, it's not going to be newly created in 20, because it was created in 19. So, a little confusing. We had it up there initially.
So the vacancies that were used to create it are still vacant?
Yes, sir.
And that position is vacant?
Uh, I do not know if that has been filled yet today, sir. I can get you that answer.
Sir?
Also, I would just like to say thank you to all the public safety supporters that have come out for all the town hall meetings and all the VOC meetings up to this point, and your support tonight for the 7% and the other benefits. We really appreciate it. And I too think that the stepping grade is the way to go. I just think it needs to be vetted by our staff, our command staff and directors, and police chief, and fire chief, and sheriff. And I think that if we do this now, it will give public safety the boost it is so desperately needed to, to, to their salaries and their bonuses and incentives. And I think that this will give us enough time to really study and implement the stepping grade for the next year, 2021 budget. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Cupid?
I could, but I won't.
Okay, all right. All right, last call. With that, this time we really are adjourned. Thank you for coming tonight.